Other devices, so we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Timmy Rushing will give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand with me if you would. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, I thank you for this day, and thank you for all your many blessings. Lord, I'd ask you to be with the bus drivers and anybody that's transporting our children to school. Please be with the farmers as they start their harvesting season because they're going to be on the road at the same time the buses are. Just keep them all safe and in your sight at all times. Lord, I'd like to ask you to continue to be with our armed forces, our public safety, this county, this state, and this country. Lord, I'd like to ask you to be with this commission, help us to make the right decisions for this county, and most of all, be pleasing to you. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mincy White will call the roll for the commissioners.
I, Venus Mincy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ray Davis. I've determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct the business of the, for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I need you to go back to the chairman.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the county manager or the board?
County manager has none, sir.
Okay, hearing none. We're going to move into this, uh, public hearing on the proposed tax increase. Uh, and I'm going to open the, I'm going to now ask for a motion to open the floor to public comments.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We did this one. Oh, excuse me. I skipped a motion there. Hearing no discussion or modification to the board, or to the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So now moving into the public hearing, I needed to ask for a motion to open the floor to public comments.
So moved.
So.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now open the floor to public comments.
Okay. Um, we have signed up Melissa Gonzalez.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm nervous because I've never done this, but I just want to voice my opinion.
It's okay, we don't bite.
Um, I actually oppose, uh, the increase. Um, I'm one of those individuals, unfortunately, that are on a fixed income. And, um, honestly, I just can't afford it. It's killing me. Um, also, I don't agree with the way the assessments are done. You know, it's one thing for someone that's just a quarter mile away from my house, builds this beautiful brick house, and I would love to live in it, two-story, get to sell it for four hundred thousand plus, and my thirty thousand dollar single white is now worth a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and I'm the automatic dishwasher. So, can you explain to me how that is even possible and can be done? Because I know I'm not the only person. I know there's other seniors out there. I know there's other fixed income people out there. And this increase is killing me. I don't have, um, my disability doesn't increase my pay every time my taxes does, but my mortgage payment sure does. And I have to find a way to do that. I have to juggle. I have to say, do I do this, pay this? It's like Robin Peter paying Paul. When is it going to stop? And I live in the country. I like living in the country. I don't need a subdivision down the road. If I wanted to live in a subdivision, I'd move there. If I wanted to live in the city, I'd move there. But I don't. I want to keep my country living. I want to keep the farmers. I like looking at the cotton. You know? It, it's a beautiful sight to see and have fresh produce. Because look at the inflation to even go buy a tomato. People can't afford this increase. And I'm just asking that y'all try to figure out another way versus trying to keep taxing the people of Bullock County. And I don't want to get into all the, the well stuff and Hyundai plant. I, I oppose all of that as well. I'm exactly five point one outside of the realm of hope if something happens to my well. And here I am on a fixed income, and I'm going to have to do that, and you're going to raise my taxes. That's just my opinion, and I appreciate y'all listening to me. And I hope you take into consideration that there are a lot more of us out there that can't afford this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cassandra Michael.
I'm Cassandra Michael. The citizens spoke loudly and overwhelmingly during the last election. They sent a mandate that has continued to be ignored. Each of you has a decision if you are for the citizens or not. This isn't about tough decisions, isn't about making tough decisions. It's about working within the budget of the taxpayers of this county. You can find excuses to hide behind, or you can practice true leadership that reflects the values of Bullock County citizens and taxpayers. Unfortunately, for too many years, the voices of citizens has fallen upon deaf ears. The more you ignore them, the louder their voices will get in elections. If you're tired of hearing me stand up here and say, don't do this, then simply listen to the citizens and don't raise taxes. I could come to you with facts and figures, but I feel like you have become numb to looking at the budgets. Now is the time for you to do what's right and not place the burden once again on the community, on the people of our community. Say enough is enough by voting against the tax increase. Use your vote to say that I stand for the people. I represent the people. I hear their cry. I understand that times are tough and that we will work through this together as a community. If you do vote for increasing taxes, it will bring fulfillment to the fears of many people that you've already made up your mind and that the taxpayers and people be damned. We will see your vote, and we will remember, thousands of us. There has been great pressure on me personally to remain silent. But when you hear from people in the community, people pulling you aside in Lowe's or at a restaurant, thanking me for what I, I'm doing and continuing to do, I cannot stay silent, and I will not be silent. We will be the voice for the voiceless and sand strong for those who need their voice amplified. Please do what is right. You have the tools to make it through this fiscal year without a tax increase. If you feel like growth is certainly coming, then place your trust in a growing tax digest with all the new houses being built. If you feel like floss is the answer, which I do, then let it come. The people need you to fight for them. Thank you.
Those are the only two people that have signed up to speak this morning. I will open the podium up to anybody else that is not signed up. Uh, if you're, if you'd like to speak, just raise your hand and we'll recognize you and have you come up to the podium. If you would, please state your name and, and your address so that we can have it for the record, please.
Marcus Tool, eight Crescent Avenue. While I personally cannot afford, and I really mean this, I cannot afford the tax increases that are coming. I also understand that all the local governments involved have to do it. And, um, and I don't know how I'm going to make my personal budget work, given that. But I know I have to, because I know that you have to do what you have to do in order to make the government of this county work. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion to close this, close the floor to public comments.
So moved, gentlemen.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes our property tax hearing for this morning. Uh, we'll have two more. The next one will be on the 21st at six o'clock in the evening, the same location. We'll also have another one on the 26th at eight, or excuse me, at six o'clock in the evening. It will be here at this same location. After we conclude that meeting, we will have the vote on whether or not we're going to raise the, or, uh, keep the mill rate where it is. So that concludes our, our, um, public hearing. Moving into our regular business, next, uh, item on the agenda is All Green Services. And I believe the presenters are going to be Mr. Ben Wall and Sam Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see if I can get this connected. I'm just giving you these books. This is basically the slide presentation we're going to give. You can look, look at the book as we go, or look at your monitors, uh, but the books are for you to take home. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies, for having us. My name is Sam Sullivan. I am Municipal Marketing Manager for All Green Services. Uh, this is Ben Wall. Ben is the President of Atlantic Waste Services, who owns All Green Services. You're going to hear two names here this morning, All Green and Atlantic Waste. Let me just give you a little bit of background. All Green Services was a company my brother started in 2007. I joined him in 2010. We were based right here in Bullock County on 301 South, going towards the interstate. We're about two miles north of the interstate, been there since 2010. Uh, and, and we grew our business to service about twenty-six different cities and counties throughout this part of the state. In 2020, I sold my business to Ben Wall. Ben and his father Burke started Atlantic Waste in Pooler, Chatham County area in 1998. Uh, Atlantic Waste became, after they purchased All Green, one of the largest solid waste companies in Georgia. Um, Atlantic is based in Pooler and services communities like Effingham County, Bryan County, Richmond Hill, Pooler, Thunderbolt, Tybee Island, Walthairville, Riceboro, Midway, a lot of communities on the coastal Savannah region. Whereas All Green service this area, Bullock County, uh, Candler County, Evans County, Claxton, Swainsboro, Twin City, Oak Park, Steelmore, Garfield, from Ludewisey to Rens, from Tybee to Tooms County is our market area. Uh, we have about 245 employees. We service forty-one, currently forty-one cities and counties and exclusive franchises for residential, commercial, industrial waste collection. We service 130,000 residential customers, uh, each week in that region. We have 221 total pieces of equipment, 37 roll-off trucks, six grapples, 21 front loaders, 17 rear loaders, 30 automated side loaders. I'm just trying to give a picture of the assets that our company has and the, and the, the area that we service. We've been the provider for Georgia Southern University, uh, more or less since 2010. We've been a big part of this community. And I also want to mention, Dink Butler and Robert Siemens are tremendous assets of this community. They've been great to work with. We've worked closely with them, hand in hand. We assisted the county with the disposal of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of tons of storm debris from Hurricane Helene at our CND landfill in Jenkins County. Uh, and Dink has provided me a lot of information to help me with this presentation this morning. Uh, so we've been partners with this community for a number, number of years. This is our market area, just showing you, uh, those 41 cities and counties. Our market is a contiguous market, meaning we're not spread all over the state. We're right here. This is our home. This is where we want to be, and this is where we want to stay. We've got three things to talk about this morning. The first is your transfer station. The second is your current collection program. And the third is curbside services as a possible solution. I was hoping the city of Statesboro may have some representatives here this morning. I don't think they're here. They were invited. Because the transfer station discussion really needs to be not just geared towards y'all, but to the, to the city of Statesboro as well, because they operate that transfer station. But some of the things we're going to share with you about that transfer station are vital. This is a view of your station that's been there since 1999. This is what you would be looking at if you were backing into the transfer station with a garbage truck or a pickup truck and trailer to dump your trash load in that station. Uh, this station, I think, was built in 99. It has never been expanded. And that's the thing we want to talk about. Here's another view of the station. You can see the loader. That's the city's loader loading the trash. If you look to the left, you'll see the, our transfer trailer hooked up to the city's, what we call yard dog. It, it moves in empty trailers into the loading area and pulls out the full ones, and our tractors cook and go. We, we drop an empty, grab a full, drop an empty, grab a full. So we're doing this all the time, whereas the city is in charge of loading and, loading our trailers. Because of the volume growth that you've had, you've had tremendous volume growth, and I'm going to show you those numbers in just a minute. We've got to supply a large number of trailers. There's a picture of about eight of them there. Each of those trailers cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Since we started in 2021, and I'll say this, we started trucking in 2021. The previous vendor had a number of issues, and I think we've solved all of those issues with our services. But the one thing we've had to do, because of your growth of volume, we've had to add a lot of trailers to provide capacity, and that has added cost, which we've had to add to our tip, to our fees, which has resulted in escalating tipping fees that you're paying. Here's, here's what I, we want to really, uh, highlight. If you look at that yellow left-hand box, that's your current building that is being utilized. But I want you to look over there at that building on the right. I'll give you another view there. As we understand it, and Dink, you correct me, that building on the right is owned by the county. Years ago, when House Bill 488 or something came up, 489, and the service delivery strategy said, you know, the city and county cannot have the same services. I think there was an agreement that the city would take over the loading, and the county would handle the recycling. And that building was an old recycling facility, and I'll let Dink comment.
Yes. The, actually, and the additional building there that you see part of it, uh, houses the recycling, uh, mechanical aspects of the recycling process that we used to be in. Um, and that has been dormant now for probably five years since COVID came in, and we kind of, we shut down recycling just before COVID. Um, everybody, there's a feel-good aspect to recycling, and there's a very small percentage of people who would like to participate in that. But in all realistics, it's not a feasible thing for us to do at this point, and I don't foresee us getting back into that anytime soon. So as we look forward in the need for expansion, that's what Sam and them are presenting, is the possibilities of us working out some type of agreement with the city to allow them to use this, or, or trade off some kind of services or properties to give them access to, to be able to expand their loading and, and storage capacity, so.
Yeah. And if you look at that building and those two yellow highlighted areas, you literally double the capacity of the transfer station building if you take out that front wall and utilize that space. And I'll go inside the building here. This is inside the building. There, there are still some old recycling, uh, balers and equipment and conveyors that I think the county owns. Uh, those could be sold as surplus, but you would immediately double the size of your capacity in, in that transfer station. Now, you would have to build, or I say you, the city, county, ever how that would work, a push wall, a concrete push wall in the back, sort of an L shape. Um, so there would be some, some expense to be able to start dumping trash in there, but once you did that, you would double the, the capacity.
That expense, we've just did a complete renovation of our transfer station on the south end of the county on something very similar size, and it was around $250,000. I, I would say with that building, maybe $300,000 would be needed, uh, to expand that facility, to make it to where it could be, to, to double the size of the transfer station. And, and one of the things that we, the reason why we want to double the size, number one, it's a safety issue for anybody that wants to dump at the transfer station. Right now, there, there's a log jam, there's the loader that's having to, to get in between, uh, the people using the transfer station and the trash itself. The financial, um, benefit is we can separate and sort out different waste streams. What I mean by that is, there is municipal household garbage, wet, smelly garbage, SpaghettiOs, diapers, food waste on one side, and then you can have construction and demolition waste on the other side. That construction and demolition waste can go to another landfill, which we've used ours in the past at a, it's, it's, uh, 29 miles, uh, from the transfer station to our landfill versus 49 miles to the MSW landfill. And we don't have all the liner systems, so it's cheaper for us. So we would then pass on those savings to you. Uh, and we'll show you the math and how that works out here in a little bit.
So here, yeah.
One other point was the, the early discussions with the city, and, and they've approached us. We've had some minor discussions that need to go a little deeper, but they are, have expressed the willingness to accept the, um, renovation costs to this side of the building so that they can expand that service.
The city?
Yeah. They have expressed that interest to, to be able to accept that cost.
So here's a look at your volumes. I didn't have 2021 when I put this together, so this is all of the tons that come in the transfer station. This isn't just the counties. This is everything that's dumped in there. And you can see from 2022, 60,000 tons to today, you're trending to do about 78,000 tons. That's a 30% growth. 30% more volume in just four years. Dink told me the county has issued 339 residential construction permits. The city has issued 105 single-family homes and 229 town home construction permits. All of this trash is in one pile, and it all goes to a lined, the most expensive tight landfill that we have in Savannah. There's, as, as Ben just said, we're, there's two things in there, municipal solid waste and CND. Municipal solid waste is what comes out of your house. It's the wet food waste at the McDonald's or the Dairy Queen. Uh, construction and demolition is just what it says. It's, it's picked up, segregated in a roll-off container primarily at a home construction site or any construction site. It's boards, it's mortar, it's drywall, it's brick, it's concrete, it's all of those things in a construction site. The, that CND does not have to go to a lined landfill, but it is. So you're paying a premium for disposal of that material. I went too far. This is a, a short map. We have a CND landfill in Jenkins County. We operate a landfill for Jenkins County. It's a CND landfill, no MSW. It's 26 miles from your transfer station. But everything now is going all the way 49, 50 miles to Savannah. So we could take CND material segregated from an expanded transfer station and save you a tremendous amount of money. This is at our CND landfill in Jenkins. That's one of those transfer trailers on a tipper dumping pure CND material in a cheaper, lower-cost landfill. This is our All Green transfer station on 301. That is our CND pile on the left. Our MSW pile is on the right. I couldn't fit it in the picture. But we've been segregating CND there for years. We operate six transfer stations. Are we truck from and/or operate from six? All Green, Statesboro, Bullock County, Pooler, Scraven County, Jenkins County, and Emmanuel This is our transfer station in Pooler. I was hoping for more trash on the floor the day I took it. Uh, MSW piles on the left, uh, CND piles on the right. The most important thing, when I say segregation, I'm not talking about having one pile and going in and pulling out CND. You just dump MSW over here, and you dump CND over here. You have two segregated piles, and you load it the same way in a transfer trailer, but you just keep the piles separate. How much would it save you? If you did 78,000 tons, if you're doing 78,000 tons this year, most things we've seen is about 25% of your total trash pile is CND. 25% is 20,000 tons. It'll save you $7 a ton to take it to Jenkins County. That's $140,000, just by expanding the building with existing space that you have and separating two piles. So every roll-off truck that comes in there from a construction site knows they dump over here. We've been doing it for years at Pooler. We've been doing it at Emmanuel. We've been doing it at All Green. It works.
From a, from a rate-on-return investment, we're talking potentially between 250 and 300,000. And so this investment of $300,000 would pay for itself in two years. And so that's a 50% return. If y'all've got other investments that are yielding 50% return, please let me know. Um, because that's a good one.
And the other thing, Ben and, and Dink, we talked about safety. You had a fatality a few years ago in the station. Wasn't there a fatality in the station? I thought somebody got hurt.
Yeah, somebody got, somebody got run over at the transfer station with a loader. No, that's been, that's been years ago now.
Have you ever been in there, especially on a Monday, when all the weekend trash is coming in? It's a dangerous spot, very dangerous spot. That concludes my transfer station. I want to get into your collection. Any questions on the transfer station or?
I, I think what we're asking for, uh, is we just want to make sure that we can come to the table with the city on this transfer station. We've been trying to explain these numbers to both the city and the county for over two years. And we just want to have y'all, let's continue discussions, and let's actually try to work together to get this thing expanded. That's what we're asking for you guys. The numbers make sense. Uh, we just want cooperation between the county and the city to, is what we need to get this thing done.
All right. So let's get into your convenience centers. You've got 21 convenience centers, or that's what I call them. Is that what you call them?
Collection, yeah, collection.
Collection centers, um, in Bullock County. This one was, uh, Pioneer on Highway 46. It was actually right after you serviced it, and it was really, really clean and tidy. At all your sites, you've got multiple open-top containers. Some of them have more than others. Some of them are bigger than others, some of them are small. But essentially, you have open-top containers for all sorts of materials to be deposited by the public. You've also got tire disposal. This is the deal of the century for a tire person, but you're paying $253 a ton when you bring it to Statesboro. I think that number's right. You just, you disposed of, you'll see the numbers in a minute, 400 and something tons of tires, but, um, I'm not, you, tire, tires can be a real issue and can be a huge expense. And you've got a 24/7 dump site there for them. Inert material. This was at, um, I forget which site this was at. Burke Holter? You know, it's a, it's a big pile. Um, I assume you pick it up at the grapple and take it to, uh, the inert site? Pre-COVID, you had all of these sites manned by an attendant. Um, that's just the attendant house I took a picture of. When COVID happened, you took the attendants out and left the, left the sites unsupervised. And I, I understand why. I mean, I get it. COVID happened, and you were trying to keep the public and the attendants, you know, apart. Uh, but the attendants never came back, and the sites are now open 24/7. This was, uh, Langston Chapel just last Wednesday or Thursday. Again, multiple containers. Um, I saw these guys. They weren't doing anything wrong, but they had these giant pine stumps dumping them. They were actually getting them in, getting them in the container. And, and then you got some more tire disposal, but you can see the contamination in that container for tires. And then I saw this gentleman. It was interesting. He was doing a very good job getting his material in the, I hope it's not anybody in here, getting it, the material in the container, but he had a couple of big tires, and right as I was pulling out, he just rolled them off and laid them on the ground. Um, and I'm not showing these pictures to say that, I mean, y'all aren't the only folks that do sites like this. But when you have sites that are 24/7, unattended, uh, you're going to have a lot of, uh, difficulties. That's right from your county website. That's your 21 sites. I know Dink has talked.
Those are the blue dots on your map, uh, if you can see them. Some of them are interstate lines, but.
Yeah. So that's your, that's where all your 21 sites are located. I will tell you this, and you're going to see a map here in a minute. Tooms County, I'll give you a cut, three examples. Tooms County has convenience centers just like you. They're manned, and they have operating hours. Their hours are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, I think from seven to six. Uh, Lawrence, big county like Bullock, has 19 centers, all manned. Their days are Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Liberty, big county, has seven sites. They're manned. Their days are six days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and they may be open Sunday from one to six on certain Sundays. But all of them are manned, but all of them have operating hours. They're not open 24/7. Some of the problems you've got, as I said, 20, they're open 24/7. You got a lot of illegal dumping. You had 412 tons of tires disposed in '24. Uh, you got commercial businesses. We saw, we were taking a picture and saw a contractor with his trailer dumping all of his debris in the container. He ought to have, you know, he ought to have a container at his job site. Uh, you got scavenging that goes on, I'm sure. You got a high, high, high volume of bulk waste. It's labor-intensive. You run three routes. You run three routes, nine trucks, a grapple truck and three roll-offs attend to one-third of the, of the sites. So you've got a lot of trucks, a lot of, lot of labor. You service them five days a week to keep up with them, and then you even work them Saturdays, the six or seven busiest ones on Saturday. Sundays, I'm sure that some of them can get overwhelmed, and Monday mornings is when the county has, has their hands full. And I'll say this, I think they do a phenomenal job. I'm not here to say they do a poor job. That is not our, they do a phenomenal job, but it is a monster, is that a good word? To manage. What does it cost? This information, I think, came from Dink. You've got a $3.4 million solid waste budget. 2.1 million is for collection. 1.3 is for disposal. You also use SPOLOST funds to buy capital, to spend capital on trucks. I think I saw some roll-off trucks in your thing in there. You've got a grapple truck, but you have maybe a couple million dollars in capital just to keep up with trucks and replacing trucks. And you pay 48-40 tipping fee when you go to the transfer station. What are some of the solutions? We want you to consider privatization of these services. This is what we do. This is all we do. You've got a lot of things on your plate. We believe we can save you money. We, we're absolutely confident we can save you money. It'll allow you to use that SPOLOST money for other needs instead of buying new trucks, because we would buy the trucks. And we could actually buy some of your trucks and containers if need be to generate some income, but that's what we do. And you would save, I don't know what the budget is in the SPOLOST budget for capital, but all of that would go away. You wouldn't have that expense anymore. The volumes from the southern end of the county, there's a lot of things we do different, can go to our transfer station. We can dump them. Y'all are passing right by our All Green Transfer Station to come all the way through town to dump. So I'm going to show you a map here in a second of that. I encourage you to consider reducing either the number of sites and/or reducing the hours, the 24. You've got gates, and I know Dink has worked on some automatic gates that do like this and some that do like this, and some of those have been problematic. But you've got, these facilities are fenced and gated. They need to be closed at night so you can manage them better. None of these other counties leave them, well, most of the counties that have convenience centers don't leave them open 24/7. I think if you reduce the sites, you're going to encourage more curbside collection. When I get into the curbside in just a second, I'll, I'll explain that. You'll always need sites. If you, if everybody in this county had a trash can at their house, you're still going to need some sites to deal with bulk waste and yard debris and materials that curbside doesn't handle. This is the map I want you to look at closely. I wish it was a little different, but I'd made it quickly. Everything highlighted at the bottom in yellow, those sites, your county sites could go to our transfer station. It would save you a tremendous amount of fuel, truck hours, labor hours. If we were doing it, that's what we would want to do, to take the, and I just highlighted a sample, and you could probably fit in one or two more below the bypass. If you see the green dot, that's the All Green Transfer Station. You're driving right past us. And we would charge you the same thing that the county's charging you.
City.
The city, the city, excuse me.
Another thing that you could do is, at the actual convenience centers, we've done this with actually Gulfstream Aerospace, where we actually label, and y'all have got it labeled, but we could do a really good job of labeling the, the types of waste that people have. So if you do have somebody that's doing a home renovation project, we can do a construction and demolition-only dumpster at a convenience site, and then just leave the household sites where it's household trash. And so we can even start to separate at these sites, and then that would determine which way the trash goes. It goes north, it'll go to Jenkins County, and if it's MSW, it goes south to the All Green, so it's quicker. So we're not having to truck trash from Brooklet all the way up to Statesboro to come all the way down when it can be pretty much there. So there's ways in which we can logistically get the waste to the landfill faster and cheaper through privatization.
And the blue and green, the blue and red legend is this idea, is if you created operating hours and you staggered them. So you had certain sites erode in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and certain sites erode in Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, but they were staggered. It would greatly enhance your ability to manage these sites. And if you put your finger on anywhere in that, in the map, on the county, you'd have access to a Monday place or a Tuesday place. But right now, you've got them open, they're all open 24/7. Just an idea to stagger them. Curbside services. All Green currently services about 40% of the county residents with, with a trash can. They pay us a fee to pick up their trash right at their house. We're not here to say that that's what you need to do county-wide. It is a solution that many counties have chosen. Even if you were completely county-wide curbside, you'd still have to have some centers for bulk and yard debris and other. That trash can really only handles household trash, doesn't handle all the other materials that a resident could generate. But there's about 20,000 residents, and we service about 8,500. There's a map of, I'm working on this map to get the whole county, the whole state covered. Everything in green are counties that are curbside, county-wide. A couple of things I want to mention there. Bullock is a big county, lot of dirt roads. There are challenges with dirt roads. There's, it's just a fact. But we do it in Tattinaw. They got a lot of dirt roads. We do it in Long. They got a lot of dirt roads. We do it in Effingham. They do have a lot of dirt roads. Burke is one of the biggest counties in Georgia. They've got a lot of dirt roads. Appeling is another very rural big county. But you can see there's a more and more of a trend towards curbside collection. Those copper-colored or gold-colored are counties with convenience centers. The blue or purple is counties that just have open dump sites. And what I mean is, they don't have a fence, they don't have a sign, they just, you're just driving down a country road, and there's a few dumpsters there. 25 years ago, if I did this map, half of Georgia would be in that purple color. And they're getting away from that for multitude of reasons. The advantage of curbside is the ultimate convenience to the customer. They, you know, we come to their house, they get a trash can, they roll it out to the street, we come get it. We've never seen a county go curbside and got away from it, changed their mind years later. Since we already service 40% of the public, we're not advocating that you mandate curbside county-wide, but if you reduce your convenience centers, or you shrink your centers, or you reduce your hours, you will enhance curbside, and that, that curbside will handle a lot of household waste away from your convenience centers. The cons, as I said, dirt roads, bad weather, and it doesn't provide for bulk waste or yard debris type pickup. I'm going to summarize everything we talked about. Get with the city, work with the city, work with us to expand your transfer station, allowing for segregation of C and D to save you about 100, save the county and city about $140,000 a year and improve safety considerably. Consider reducing your operating hours at the centers. Consider reducing the number of sites. And camera system, we hadn't talked about that. I think Dink is working on a improved camera system. That's a vital, vital thing in today's world. Consider privatization of your convenience centers. I think if y'all decide, and we're not here to give you a proposal on here's what we can do or what we can save you. We want y'all to decide the direction you want to go with this, and then if you make that decision, we can then give you some sort of presentation on here's what we can do and here's the savings.
If y'all would like to have a committee or a smaller group of commissioners that want to kind of sit down with us and Dink, we could give you a better idea on numbers, you know, as far as what the savings would be, if y'all are interested in that.
I will say that some of the things that they have mentioned here, such as the costs, this is part of the service delivery agreement, whether we can use All Green's facility on the south end of the county, the air rights money that's in the SPOLOST money that comes off the top, all of that, Chairman, we spoke about the other day. So those are some things that we would need to iron out between in the service delivery agreement, mostly before we can proceed to any final decisions on, on being able to change any type of operation if we decide to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that we understand, there's, there's some hurdles we're going to have to jump if we want to change anything, and I know there are some things that we spoke about that need changing. So that's a, that's a direction that we're going to move forward, is to kind of bring up some of those subjects for some service delivery changes in that agreement between the county and the municipalities moving forward to try to save the county some money and give us some options on being able to dispose of things and manage it a little better, even if we don't change the process. But the process, based on their representation, if we can get those service delivery agreements changed, they still think they can save us some, some funds in, in the long run on our operations. So it's just some information to consider. This came up because of a commissioner's inquiry a few months back after the ACCG conference in Savannah, and it took us a little while to get this set up and organized, but that's what prompted this presentation. So thank y'all.
We thank you very much for giving us the audience. We really do.
Appreciate it. Do y'all have any questions for us, any concerns?
Mr. Chairman, these men are basically kind of at my request and Mr. Ray's request. We heard their.
Oh, it was just y'all.
Down at ACCG, their, their presentation sounded real good, and we kind of wanted them to come and let the other commissioners hear about their, their proposal, you know, anything we can do to help with our situation here and maybe help save some money and also help with the collection for the, for the citizens of the county. I just thought it was very interesting what they proposed to do and, and let, let all the other commissioners hear, and then also the citizens. Just wanted to let that be known.
Mr. Newkirk?
Appreciate y'all coming today. If we did anything privatize it or changed up anything, we would not have to continue with the transfer upgrades at the city of Statesboro, right? If we started transferring waste to y'all, then that would get us away from spending any money up there at the city of Statesboro doing that remodeling or expansion.
We could, for, for the time being, we could, we could accept all of your trash that you have on your trucks now. We are not super essentially located to the ones that you have up in Rocky Ford. I would not, I, I like the idea of having, and where we come together with the city and we say, hey, all right, we're going to, here's your allocated amount of tonnage. We, we, we give you tickets. We can say, hey, here's your tonnage, here's your tonnage. There's, you know, 15,000 tons in the north, and there's 10,000 tons of stuff in the south, and that goes towards the same fund. I've looked into a little bit of y'all's tonnage and how that gets allocated and paid for, and I'm not a governmental accountant, so I don't understand how that works with SPOLOST. But we could take and receive all of it if you wanted to, or we could separate and source it out and split it.
Because I mean, I know we need to do something. I mean, these recycling centers are getting to be a pain. I mean, looking at them, we've got illegal dumping going on 24/7, only stations of free for all down there. I'm getting calls all the time that, you know, the fathers don't want to send their 16, 17-year-old daughters down there to dump, because whenever they pull up to get ready to throw a trash can, you know, throw the trash out, scavenger pops out in the middle of the dumpster. So I mean, we have to do something. And I mean, whatever, we, we, we need to proceed in a direction to change what we're doing, because it's not working. I mean, I don't think anybody in the county can sit there and say it is working. So I mean, I'm up for whatever we need to do to continue down this route, to try to either privatize it. I know we need to shut the gates sometimes, but whatever we need to do to get going.
This is just my opinion. Obviously, there's a lot of opinions in the room. I would reduce the number of sites that you have from 21 to maybe 10, or maybe we sit there and do a slope, and, and then we'll transition into curbside for more people as it becomes maybe a little more, less convenient for certain ones. And we can do that over the course of months or years, if y'all would like to do that, and, and we can eventually take that over for you guys. And then that way, y'all aren't responsible for any of the billing, y'all aren't responsible for, that's how Chatham County does it. Chatham County lets the, the citizen pick, the garbage company, and so that's how that works. And we could do that, and that's just something that y'all don't need to have as a line item in your, in your budget. Now, Chatham County does have, operate their convenience centers, and we've given them proposals to do that, but that, I don't know how to say this, that is a, that's a, they, they like to spend more money than they don't need to. I was just going to say that, that it's very inefficient.
I'd like to proceed with possible getting a little committee put together to start going down this alley and figure out what we need to do with that. So, you know, everything you do to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to go along with Mr. Newkirk's suggestion, maybe getting Mr. Dink to look into it since he's the expert on this. Maybe form some type of committee with him, a head of it and his, Mr. Robert steering this committee and then bringing back something to us, if that's within.
I see Mr. Davis reaching for his mic like he's got something he wants to add there.
I realize that tightening down on the, how open these facilities are. But as you transition, even we have this problem today, there's going to be people that'll dump trash anywhere they can dump it. And I realize you're going to separate private from commercial. We're not in the commercial business. But they're going to be dumping it on dirt roads, fields, and now y'all have done this before in other counties. How has this transition worked there, and how do they prevent it?
It's a great question. It certainly is a factor that happens, and the county has to enforce whatever ordinances they have in place. We've worked with counties on identifying when you see a pile of stuff. The one thing about when people dump a bunch of trash on the side of the road is there's fingerprints all over it. If you go through that trash, oftentimes you can find out a receipt or something of, of an address, and then that's where the county has to get involved to put the enforcement. So the sheriff's department, the, whatever enforcement arm is, is there to enforce it, you're going to have to put some teeth in your ordinances to prevent that. It will happen, but I don't want you to think this. If you do this, that every road is going to be littered. No, that's not the case. There'll be cases where they'll dump it right in front of the gate that you locked at 6:00 the other morning, and you need to have a sign there with the county ordinance, and if you dump here, you know, and you got the camera, you're going to prosecute them. So there, and I, when you do that and you publicize that, it starts to shrink. But it is an initial problem, but with enforcement, it will shrink. Will it be gone for 100%? Probably not. I'm sure you've got some illegal dumping going on now on dirt roads. But you just can't, you have 21 open dumps. That's what you got. That's what you got. And you can't, you can't have them open 24/7, or you'll never, no matter how many signs you put up, how many cameras you put up, how many pretty new trucks you buy, you're going to be fighting that monster always.
Are y'all in the presence of manning these facilities?
I'll be honest with you, I do not like to manage them. We can. It's just that the cost is, is high. So, for example, in Jenkins County, we manage their, they've got 41 open front-load cans scattered throughout the county, and we have to pay a crew of people to go by each site twice a week, and it's, and I'm telling you what, you could sit there and you clean it up on a Tuesday, and a damn tornado went through by Wednesday afternoon. And, and that's what happens with those.
But you're, but you're probably talking about manning this, the sites. In Effingham, we have one big site, right?
We've got one big site, and, and Brian, we have two. We can man these sites if we want to, to do that. You know. We can man these sites if we want to do that, you know, get a team of, you know, in the past, y'all had senior citizens and a group of, I wouldn't say they were volunteers, they were paid, weren't they?
Yeah.
I mean, we could work on managing that and doing that and providing a proposal to do that, and that would not be an issue, you know, and if that's the case, I do like the idea of having staggered openings that are close to each other. I don't know, Sam, if you could pop up your map. Sam just threw the map together, but having the, can y'all, anyway, it's not on, but anyway, haven't, okay, there you go. Some of the, there might be too many blues right next to the city, there needs to be maybe some more reds, but, you know, having alternating days, that way you're not utilizing so many people, you don't have 21 people that you're trying to go hire, maybe, maybe it's, we reduce the sites from 21 to, say, 15, and then from there, you pick which ones are open on Monday, you know, Wednesday, Friday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and then Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday, and that, that way you can, you can start there, but have them where they're close, that way if somebody's like, man, I got a stinking bag of shrimp, and I gotta get it out, and my normal one that I go to is closed, okay, I'll just go that way, five miles, and get rid of it.
If you had 15 and you had them staggered, you'd have seven or eight open on a day. You wouldn't have 15 open, you'd have only seven. So your attendance required for that day or less, your management of it, your collection of it, you could collect those that are closed, I mean, there's a number of things you can do with staggered hours, and I'm not promoting these days or these hours, I'm just trying to give you a visual, if you looked at those colors and you had a checkerboard of colors, you've got different locations open different days. That's all I was trying to present with that picture.
I think these are things that the committee could figure out on the law, we don't wanna try to do all out here today.
Go ahead, Mr. Rushing.
I'd just like to take the opportunity because a lot of people don't realize it, but back, not only the storms, but when COVID come, everybody thought, we, everybody thought everybody was gonna go home, get in the house, shut the door, and everybody did, and they remodeled every bathroom, every kitchen, cleaned out the barn, just run us over in trash, not seen anything about the city, but they had to shut our transfer station down. Well, I'd like to take the opportunity from Mr. Wall and Mr. Sullivan, and with the relationship they have with Dink, me and Dink run all over this county, he said, I'm getting in the truck and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to these fellows. These fellows took our trash right then and told us to bring all we had, and they had the opportunity to charge us anything they wanted to, and we'd have had to pay it, and they took it for exactly what the city of Statesboro took it for. So that's the kind of fellows you're dealing with, and I know that for a fact because me and Dink were together on that. And as far as the committee, I'm all for that, but I do, and Dink will remember this, he's been beat up with so many storms and all that. The county commission done a, got a company to come in about, going right along with Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Wall's recommendation, oh, we give like $140,000 for that survey done on these dumpster sites, and Dink was in the process and bought more land, and I think they were gonna close more sites than they recommended, and I think they was gonna cut these sites like in half. So we've done, spent the money. We've, Dink's got the, he just ain't, he ain't been able to, I mean, because he's been trying to get some sites ready for two years and just, well, no help, and storm after storm. So with the committee, I think we can get some of this done pretty easy. I mean, of course, they gonna have to work through the SDA with the city, and the city's got to agree.
Months if not years to do everything that we're trying to do, but I think when you come out of it in the long run, I think that you're gonna see, you know, a lot of savings to the county, I think you're gonna see more curbside transition, I think you're gonna see cleaner sites, I think it's just gonna take, you know, probably two or three years. But the first thing to do, the easiest thing to do immediately is to work on that transfer station and maybe figure out which sites might, I mean, the one that's right up there at Rocky Ford, that's right at the Jenkins County line, I'm sure y'all got some illegal dumping that's going on, if a lot of construction, even though it's free in Jenkins County to the citizen, it's freed here to them now, so that one might be moved, the same one that's on the other side of Portal. I mean, those are just two that look like they get, and then the one that's, I guess, what is that, Neville's?
Down in the bottom part.
Yeah, Groveland, Groveland, that's another one that could be shifted, anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, we have spent the money, Dink's got a plan, and the committee, whoever you want to put together on it, then I think we can move forward. I just want to take the opportunity to tell y'all, fellas, we appreciate you, because y'all saved, y'all saved us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Christie, could you, if I put you on the spot here, could you tell us what we've got budgeted this year for solid waste disposal?
Yeah, 1.4 million, just in disposal, four million this year.
I think it's 1.2 or 3, just that's just, well, that's just to pay, that's not including an air rights, that's what we're paying the city for disposal, that's all.
And then Dink, what's your budget looking like for solid waste side of things this year? Crash collection?
Just a collection. I think that's 3.4 for this year, and we projected that, I think, 1.3 of that was for Tippich, and 2.1 of that was the operational aspect of that, and then we had the capital side of that for the trucks, the replacement on the trucks, and so overall, we're probably looking at close to 4.5 to $5 million overall budget for the year for solid waste between SLOST and, and then with the money that comes off the top of SLOST for the, what was termed air rights, you know, so there's, there's a, there's a lot of money there, and, you know, can, and one of the big things, a good portion of that money, other than the SLOST money, a good portion of that money comes out of insurance premium tax money, but it's still the same thing as SLOST, if we get to a point where we're saving money, or we can reallocate that money somewhere else, because there are some other departments that can use the insurance premium tax money as well. So it just depends on how the financials work out in the long run. I will go one step further with this, you all know we have a lot of open positions in public works, whether that's in, not so much in solid waste, it's mostly in transportation and fleet, and, you know, so as far as employees, we could offer most every employee an opportunity to move to another position if we get to that point and decide we're gonna do something with privatization. But also, I think Sam and Ben have expressed the opinion of the option of considering taking on our equipment and possibly some employees if that's the direction we end up going, so nobody would suffer from this in the long run, it's just gonna be a financial thing as like Ben has represented there over the first few years to get things kind of balanced out before we start seeing dramatic savings over any time.
The only reason I ask about budgeting and what it's costing us is that, you know, we know that over the last 20 years, Bullock County has grown by about 1,000 people a year, every year. We know that for the next 20 years, we're gonna see that same continued rate of growth, 1,000 people per year. So as we have these trash collection centers, convenience centers, whatever you want to call them, you're gonna see more trash in them, we're still gonna be running the roads to pick up all this trash. As we see this growth, not just here, but in the surrounding counties around us, you're gonna see even more illegal dumping in these sites. There comes a point, and I think that we're almost there now, where this becomes unsustainable for us to continue to do this. Now, I think that there's some things that we need to do, we need to adjust our ordinances to where when we're building these subdivisions, we require these subdivisions to come up with a solid waste disposal plan as part of their development, so that they have to have curbside pickup in them, and then you don't have so many people dependent on these dump sites. But, you know, and my experience is, I'm a customer all green, and I tell people, I do not live on a county-maintained road, it is, sometimes it looks like the surface of the moon, they pick my trash up every week. So it's doable, and I think that we've got to work forward, it's just a matter of making the business cost analysis on this to where we're at least breaking even, because my concern is, and these are the things that concern me, is, you know, we got folks that are upset, you know, pitchforks and torches right now about taxes. We spent an enormous amount of money on this, and this is one of those things that I tell people, that if you own a $300,000 house in this county, you pay this county right now $1,340 a year in taxes. So that number's gonna keep going up. Now, I can tell you, trash services is far more expensive than that, but this is one of those things that it adds to that, every household we add to this county adds a greater expense, and they're consuming more services than they're using here. We've got to find a way to curb this. So with that being said, Jeff, do we need a motion for this committee, or can we just do this as an informal working group?
Well, if you formally appoint a committee, it's gonna be subject to the Open Meetings Act, which, all this is fine if it's, you know, in public, but I'm just, if you do the Open Meetings Act, we need to have to prepare an agenda, notify the media, keep minutes. Yes, sir.
Okay. So it sounds like we're gonna, we're gonna make a committee, or excuse me, a working group, let me clarify that.
Yeah, whatever you call it, if y'all appoint it, then it's subject to open meetings.
A garbage working group.
Can I ask for volunteers?
I'm just saying, if you appoint somebody, appoint it, it's subject to open meetings.
Yeah, can I ask for volunteers to participate? Yeah, okay.
Let me mention one other.
Anybody that would like to volunteer? All right, there's one, anybody else? Mr. Simmons, there's two, all right, if you need more, you let me know.
I got it. All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you all so much, thank you.
All right, I believe that brings us to public comments. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or, excuse me, name and address for the record and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted five minutes.
Mr. Keith Hamilton.
Speaking of septic tanks. You gotta be known for something. Good morning, how are you? Good morning, doing well, I hope y'all are. Keith Hamilton, 11111, Arcola Road, Brooklyn, Georgia, 30415. Quick word of thanks, and I'm going to give you credit, and I want to credit Chief Tapley and Brian Hendricks and all the others that were involved. About our public safety plan and the execution of it, it was very, very well executed, and I want to commend you for that. As one of a few thousand affected by that, I wanted to also thank you that recently our homeowner's insurance was renewed, and we were audited, I requested that audit. Our ISO for my household dropped from a 10 to a 4. It cut my homeowner's insurance rates to less than half, and that also was replicated for my mother's residence next to me and for our son and daughter-in-law's residence just down the road. So I commend you for that. I think you've done an excellent job, I think you've managed some difficult situations, and I told you I would give you credit when I thought it was due, and I think it's due. For us, combined our county taxes and our homeowner's insurance, and those two expenses are inextricably linked together, they are joined at the hip, has reduced by thousands, and that's just for my household alone, so I commend you for that. I also will tell you, thank you. I think the tax proposal that you've set forward, I support it, I think it's reasonable and responsible. We've got to understand as the population increases, tax increases are inevitable, it's just going to happen, and it's driven by economic forces that we as residents have no control over, and you as elected officials have no control over. I just want to commend you for handling it really, really well. Of the five counties most impacted, what you are proposing to us is less than half of the tax increase of the next closest county to us. All five counties have proposed tax increases, one of them's increasing tax, property taxes 49% this year. So again, I commend you, job well done. I want to leave you with two questions. It had been said before that we get no sales tax revenue to go to our general county operating budget. We have an 8% sales tax, 4% of it goes to the state of Georgia, 1% is our transportation for special transportation projects, 1 is our special purpose for capital outlays, and 1% is for the education SLOST, for education capital outlays for schools. I saw that the local option sales tax for Bullock County, 100% goes to the Board of Education, and that's a really Atlanta thing and unique for Bullock County. And my questions were just simply, and I want the Cliff Note version if y'all can answer this, one, how did that come to be, and secondly, what options do we have to either change that or make some types of revisions to it? And thank you.
I'm gonna take a, I'll try to give you the gestalt on that.
All right.
So when you do a, when you do one of these county-wide taxes, you have to bring in all of the municipalities that are affected by it, much like we did with SLOST, and Jeff, if I start to get off the reservation here, please stop me. You have to, like they did with SLOST last year, you have to get all the parties in there, and they have to come to the table and figure out how they're gonna split this up. My understanding historically was when it came down to the local option sales tax you're referring to that goes to the Board of Education, when they all came to the table, they couldn't agree on what they were gonna do, so they all agreed to disagree and said, we're gonna give this money to education.
That's, yeah, I think that's pretty accurate. It was done through a local constitutional amendment, which you can't do those anymore, but the ones that were in existence when the new constitution came in could be continued, and if you didn't follow the process to continue them, then they sunset. This one was continued. So that's the answer to your first question, how was it done? The second question, there's really nothing to do, we can do to change it at this point.
So this happened 20 years ago, 25 years ago?
Yeah, yeah, it's been that way ever since I've been there.
Now, I will tell you, and hang around, because we're gonna talk about this some, so House Bill 581 did two different things. The first thing that it did was it gave counties the option to provide a floating local option sales tax. We did not opt out of that, okay? So that was step one. The second step with that was if you did not opt out of House Bill 581, you would be provided the opportunity to put on the referendum an additional, what they're calling a FLOST, which is a 1% sales tax, another one, but this one is set up to where it will pay, and it is written into the language of the law and our resolution that we're gonna bring up here in a little bit, that this will go to directly offset property taxes. Now, how does that work? It's real easy. 1% sales tax, if this pass, if this goes on the referendum in November, which that's what we're working to do, if it passes in November, one January, the county starts to collect a 1 cent sales tax, it goes into a separate fund. That fund is collected, and it will have to be collected until 1 July 2027, is that correct? Yes, because you have to get the money in there before you can offset the property tax for it. They don't want, the state does not want the county to overcommit or undercommit with this funds. So then what will happen is that money is divided up amongst the county and the various cities within the county, and we're gonna talk about how that money will be divided up here in our new business. But the idea is, once that fund is set up, 1 July 2027, it will be dispersed to the county, to the city of Statesboro, Portal, Register, and Brooklyn. They'll get a check. That money will sit in the bank, if it collects interest while it's there, that money gets divided up too. You don't hold any of this money back, and then what happens is that money goes into a general fund, and it offsets the money that's in there, or what you would pay in property taxes, dollar for dollar. So just for an example, if we collect $15 million, and that's dispersed to the county, then we will take that and divide, or reduce property taxes by $15 million. A mil for the county right now is 3.2, 3.2 million dollars. So I don't math in public, but you take 15 and divide it by 3, that goes in five times. So that's a five mil reduction in property taxes. Now, that would have to be readjusted every year based off of what the revenue comes in from the property tax, but that is the intent of doing that, and that is what we're trying to do today, is get that put on the resolution. So, and, you know, the lost, I think, is lost, and you're correct, we are one of eight counties in the state of Georgia that provides that lost to the school board. So, and you can argue the pros and cons of that, it is what it is, so.
Y'all need to put some Tylenol back there in a candy dish, but I appreciate the answer.
Got some in the pocket if you'd like one.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry that I'm moving slow. I'm getting my knee replaced in October, so it's a little, little tough to get up here, as you guys can see. I represent Clay Connor and his company, and I asked to speak here today. I asked to speak here today because I wanted to address some of the public statements that have been made recently about Clay and his company, unfairly so. To give you a little background about me, for 15 years, I was a federal prosecutor in the Southern District of Georgia here. One of my mentors was B.A. Van Edenfield across the street, God rest his soul. I prosecuted fraud and public corruption. The person who started the Gary Lewis case was me when Greg Parker called me up and said Gary Lewis is trying to bribe me. The person who started the Will Brett case was me. I also prosecuted the police chief for Savannah, Willie Lovett, for protecting a gambling operation. Some of you may be old enough to remember Robin Williams up in Augusta. I prosecuted him for stealing about $2.5 million from the Community Mental Health Center of East Central Georgia. I say that not to pat myself on the back. I say that to tell you that I know public corruption and I know fraud. And the allegations that have been made against Clay and his company are as far from that as you could possibly imagine. I don't typically do this work. I have my own firm now. We got offices in Atlanta, in Macon, in Savannah. And the only time that I get involved in things like this is when I think people have been treated unfairly and Clay has been treated unfairly. And the reason why I asked to be here today is because, you know, something went out on social media yesterday that says, there have been concerns raised by citizens about the proposed issuance of contracts, contracts to Sand Creek Land Construction, which is owned by Commissioner Toby Connor's brother. People are chiefly concerned because there are no other bidders and the continued mention of Sand Creek in a GBI investigation, sources below. Sources below linked to news reports that were generated by the very entity that posted this, those allegations. Okay? When I got involved in this, I looked at every scrap of paper, every invoice, every ticket, every whatever. And the only thing that I found with regards to Clay Connor is that he's providing an excellent service to Bullock County. That is it. And so based on the information that I reviewed, we took it to the GBI. And I said, Clay, you're going to sit down and talk to them voluntarily with all of this information that we have based on these anonymous community sources of information. And I, when I saw this posting last night, I called the GBI agent. I said, I know you guys don't typically do this because I was a fed one time, and you don't agree to the existence of an investigation? You don't agree that an investigation has been terminated? And I told the GBI agent, this is a time that you guys need to step up because this stuff keeps occurring. He said, from my perspective, this case is closed. Thank you very much. So I bear no ill will to anybody on this commission. I just thought it very important that the public know, based upon public information that is going out there with regards to Clay and his company. Clay and his company is providing a valued service to the citizens of Bullock County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I'll just go ahead and add this now. I've had a couple of phone calls about this over the last week or so, and I'll tell you the same thing that I've told every one of those people that I've talked to about this. The last time I looked, we were still in the United States of America, and a man is innocent until he's proven guilty. Let that sink in for a minute. Now, you not like a man because he's, you, personal reasons, that's fine. But you can sit here and you can raise sand about stuff, that's fine too. But with things like this, when you're saying, oh, there's an investigation ongoing, yeah, there might be. But I think that the fact that we need to look at is, a man is innocent until he's proven guilty. And I'll tell y'all, stand by. Is that all the public comments? Okay. So I'm going to move into the consent agenda. And they're going to make me work today because they got about 14 items on here. So starting at the top, number one, approve the meeting minutes for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Number two, approve the executive session minutes from Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Number three, approve a resolution to establish a special street light district for Cornerstone Point subdivision. Number four, approve the appointment of Matthew Lovett to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term beginning August 19th, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2025. Number five, approve the purchase of two ambulances from 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment for a total amount of $634,910. Number six, approve a special event permit for the 5U Georgia Southern Chapter to host a nonprofit event at Ogiechi Technical College, 20 Joe Kennedy Boulevard on September 19th, 2025, from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Number seven, approve the purchase of two roll-offs via Sourcewell Contract from Sanson Equipment Company in the total amount of $438,824 to be paid with SLOST funds. Number eight, approve a yearly service and support contract for E911 radio system with Motorola in the amount of $195,907.22. Number nine, approve an intergovernmental agreement for animal control and municipal court services with the town or register. Number 10, approve a grant application process for awarding opioid settlement grants to nonprofit organizations in Bullock County that provide opioid addiction treatment, prevention, and recovery services. Number 11, approve a lease and fixed base operator agreement with Low Country Flight Company LLC and Christian Rushing. Number 12, approve the reappointment of Nikita Robinson and Janine Brown to the library board with terms from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028, and approve the appointment of Christine Jaeger-Rushing for a term from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Number 13, approve the appointment of Commissioner Ray Mosley to the Bullock, or excuse me, Statesboro Bullock County Airport Committee with a term from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2031. Number 14, approve the appointment of Lorna G. Deloche and Catherine Tootle to the Region 5 Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council for three-year terms. We can approve these terms collectively or we can move any items to new business for further discussion. Do I have a motion? Hang on, I got to get a pen before you start.
I just like to pull number seven off. It's a new business.
Number seven, go on to new business. Anything else? Number five. Anything else? Okay, with the exception of number five and number seven, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Got a first from Mr. Mos, or excuse me, Mr. Simmons and Mr. Rushing. I know we're moving faster. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So before we move on to items number one, two, and three, and this connects with the public comments that were made earlier. Yesterday, I was made aware of some information that I'm still working to confirm, and I'm going to request that we table the items number one, two, and three until our meeting September 2nd.
Mr. Sherman, if you don't mind, before we get started, recuse myself.
And just to clarify, Mr. Connor is recusing himself because he is the brother of Mr. Clay Connor, who we're going to be discussing with these next three items. As I was saying, I would like the opportunity to confirm these, the information that I received yesterday with the GBI before we move any further with this so that we can get some clarity on this whole situation. And if it would please the board, I'd like to have a motion to table these items, one, two, and three.
I make a motion?
Got a motion. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor of tabling these three items? I got two, four, all opposed. Three, four. All right. Looks like we will not be tabling these items today. Okay, moving on. Assistant Public Works Director, Robert Siemens.
Good morning. Robert Siemens, Assistant Director of Public Works, Bullock County. First on the list. Staff recommends and requests approval of sealed bid submitted by Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for dump truck rental contract. Background on this, Bullock County Public Works requested the assistance of the purchasing manager to assist with the request to solicit for sealed bids for dump truck rental contracts. We released this on Thursday, July 17th, and sent out to vendors and posted on websites and ran in the, ran the ad in the local paper. Questions were due on Wednesday, the 23rd, by 11:00 AM. We did have a couple of questions that were responded to by Friday, July 25th, by 11:00 AM, and were sent to all the vendors per bid and posted to website. Due date was Thursday, July 31st at 3:00 PM. On July 31st, 2025, at the bid opening meeting, we did receive one sealed bid package marked Dump Truck Rental. The package was opened and reviewed by the purchasing manager and was determined to be complete. The bid was from Sand Creek Land Construction LLC. The contract with exception reads on as follows. Number one, rental cost per hour per unit at $105 per hour, eight-hour minimum plus one-hour ride time. Sand Creek will provide tandem dump trucks with operator on an as-needed basis by Bullock County Departments for various projects. This contract will be for one year with the option to renew for four successive one-year terms. Each year, we'd have to bring it back to you for renewal. And I'm open to any questions. Do the best I can to answer.
I have no problem, Clay, back there. He's done plenty of work with me in the past. I grew up with his wife's family over there in Macon and Effingham, so that's not a problem with that. And y'all know I've questioned one bid jobs only before, so this is not anything new with this. In our own contract, we wanted to have three dump truck companies. I saw that in the contract. Are we still going to be able to possibly go out and get more on top of Clay's to have that extra backup in case he's busy? Or what's the plan to have backup? Kind of like how we did the hurricane cleanup. You know, we had two different companies, so in case one company gets full, we can have a possible backup. Is there a possibility of having somebody on backup if Clay's trucks are running hot heavy to us, or what's the possibility of that? That's really my only concern here.
In my opinion, because we didn't have any other bids, we can't lock any names to that. So therefore, I would assume that we could not cover them in this contract. But what I would expect is if we need services, that Clay can reach out and subcontract with other contractors to supply the service that we need, which is what we've done in the past anyway, with the emergency services that we dealt with in the past. This, this is, this information went out to over 300 different contacts for bid. This is a prime example of the same explanation that we gave back during the storm of why we only had two people that were interested in helping us. And so Clay, as a member of this community, has stepped up and helped us through the storm process, through the recovery process for the last two years with everything that we've had going on. And I would expect that continued relationship moving forward. And like I said, he has subcontracted some other trucks in the past to supplement what we needed so that we didn't have to deal with all those individuals, and I would expect that to continue.
Appreciate it. Robert, can we, y'all just explain to us what you're trying to do by having these, these contracts set up right now?
For, for trucking, what we found out is, and we started out right after the storm of trying to get materials, rock, different types of rock, number fours, GAB, 57s, rip wrap, whatever it is. And we were getting, we were hauling that with our tandem dump trucks out of Ellebel, which was a very limited access. They were supplying so many different developments and everything that was going on. We were very limited as to the volume that we could get. We were limited in how, how many, how much volume we could haul. So in the emergency response process of some of the funds that were allocated for that, we reached out and rented some trucks to assist us so we would have material to work with and try to accomplish the work in a, in a reasonable timeframe. So in that process, what we learned was, especially for long hauling, and you'll see that as, as we get on into this, it was cheaper for us to long haul some of that material from the quarry, which we can get state contract pricing on the material, and we're only paying the trucking fees with being able to do that, and that's cheaper. We could get it cheaper that way than we could hauling it out of Ellebel, which is a rail service down there to a private company. And so that is where we're at, is as we need materials, whether it's storm-related or whether it's regular daily operational repairs that we do, we need to be able to have those materials on site for use. And it's more economical to do it this way and have that availability and the freedom to be able to activate that as we move forward. So that's, the ultimate goal is better service for material and less expense on us as far as the operation goes of gaining that material on site to be able to use.
So the intent here isn't to use these trucks every day. It's, hey, we need to go get a bunch of-
It's as needed. Yes, sir.
We got, we got to get a bunch of rock.
Right. Yeah.
You call up Ellebel or wherever it is, and you say, I need, how many tons of rock do I go up there and get?
Uh, yeah. You choked me up with that one. Yeah, we've, we've probably used, what, 100,000 tons, maybe more of rock in the last year.
Okay, so in the, in the preparation for Debbie before it came in, how much rock did y'all haul down here?
Before Debbie?
Yeah.
That would have been Adalia, and, and we probably used, I'm going to guess, 40, 50,000 ton of rock with Adalia.
Used county resources.
Yes. We were moving most of that with that. Now, Clay helped us some, I think even back then.
But the intent here is, we need a bunch of rock. Everybody else in the state's trying to get rock at the same time.
Absolutely.
We're going to have something lined up, just like we're trying to do with the storm cleanup, folks.
Absolutely. That's, that's-
Get the stuff on the shelf so that when, when the stuff-
When we need it, yeah. When we need it-
Rumbling around trying to get help then, correct?
Yes, right. When we need it, we don't have to go through the emergency process that we had to go through during those storms to activate some of those services then. They'll be on the shelf and we can activate them without having to go through the emergency process, and they're acknowledged. Y'all have approved those contracts with storm gathering and monitoring and different things like that. This is along the same lines.
Now, let's talk about the single bid. How many, you said you solicited 300 different companies for bids, correct?
That went out, the email as it went out through the different media aspects was, had over 300 contacts on it.
Who were some of those companies that, that you reached out to?
Excuse me?
Who were some of those companies that you reached out to?
It went out to all the locals, Ellis Woods, Reeves, I mean, it went out to everybody. It went out to Durisso Trucking in Scrivin County, which they chose not to bid as well. So I mean, it went out to a number, and I don't know that we have all 300 of those names. It's just that's the spread that it went out.
Our purchasing manager put it into her system. It does track the numbers, and there were 390 emails sent out to prospective bidders and zero bounced back as bad emails. And there were 390 emails sent out to prospective bidders and zero bounce-back as bad emails.
That just goes back to the volume of work that's out there and the fact that a lot of these businesses are doing all they can do or all they want to do. And as we have stated a number of times, especially right after Debbie, when we reached out for assistance, that Sand Creek and Durisso were the only two that came to our rescue per se to help us with transporting materials. And they put some of their jobs that they had on the books on the side to assist us prior to the storm so that we could get some material in here and get some stockpile to be able to respond because we were expecting to have to deal with some extensive issues there. So it just, to me, it says a lot for our community that we have companies and people within our community that are willing to step up and help us as the government to cover our citizens' safety in travel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to clarify, Dink, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but basically what you're trying to do is during times of calm water, go ahead and get this in place because of what we all went through during the storms, everyone trying to respond and react. And in your case, trying to find help. We implemented some emergency processes to fund, to get help. And there are some people that argued that that was wrong or illegal. So you're trying to put something in place when there's time for people to look at it, examine it, and make sure that everything is correct. And as you and Robert have explained, and having worked with the state at one time, and Fay is not in here, Fay Bragg, but I can guarantee everyone that Fay Bragg is not going to skimp when it comes to following the process.
Yes, sir.
And I believe she enters this into something that it is or is similar to the state purchasing-
Yes, sir.
Platform-
Yes, sir.
That puts it out across the entire state.
Yes, sir.
So I'll say that I'm satisfied that everyone in the business that signs up to do business had a shot at this.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I appreciate the efforts, Dink, that you and Robert and your team put into this to prepare for the next time. Talking with Corey, we're trying to delay that next time. So he hit it out of the park on the first storm, so we have faith in him too. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tillman, the one thing I will say, and you know, there was a lot of questions about how we went about that process to start with in the emergency funding and all of that. And there were a lot of accusations made over time about we didn't follow purchasing policies and stuff. We followed the county's purchasing policies as far as emergencies go. That was... That bothers me that-
Dink, let me just stop you right there.
Yeah.
If there was an issue with that, you wouldn't be here right now.
Well, thank you, sir.
Okay.
So we, I just wanted to make that clear, that we didn't do anything wrong in that process. But this is just a step forward in that to try to assure the public that we are continuing to be transparent.
Let's just move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, I'm gonna call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept this bid.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Y'all want to go ahead and move on to number two?
Yes, sir. The next one will be for FY 26 LHDT Public Works 02 Long Haul Tractor Trailer Rental Contract. Same thing exactly as I read before. Staff recommends and requests approval for seal bid submitted by Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for long-haul tractor trailer rental contract. This is the tractor trailers that we've put on the road to these quarries to pick this material up and bring it back to our location or other departments here with Bullock County. The bid was from Sand Creek Land Construction LLC. The contract with no exception reads as follows. Bid for hauling gravel-type material hauling only does not include the material. Ellebel Rock Yard, $13.88 per ton. Augusta Rock Quarry, $26 per ton. Appaling Warrington Rock Quarry, 26.19 per ton. Molina Dirt, 44.97 per ton. Sand Creek will provide long-haul tractor trailer with operator on an as-needed basis by Bullock County Departments for various projects. This contract will be for one year with the option to renew for four successive one-year terms. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions or comments on this one? Here and done, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Number three?
Yes, sir. FY 2020 LHTT Public Works 03 Long Haul Tractor Trailer Specialty Load Tractor Trailer Rental Contract. Staff recommends and requests approval of the seal bid submitted by Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for long-haul tractor trailer specialty load trailer rental contract. This bid is for handling of the riprap type material. This is the larger pieces of material that does require special trailers to be used to haul the material in. From the Augusta Rock Quarry is $30.50, $30.50 per ton. And from the Appaling Warrington Rock Quarry is $32.96 per ton. Sand Creek will provide long-haul tractor trailer specialty load trailers with an operator for an as-needed basis by Bullock County Departments for various projects. This contract will be for one year with option to renew for four successive one-year terms.
Questions or comments? All right, here and done. Call for a motion.
To approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we've made the first three, we're about an hour and a half into this. My blood pressure medicine's working real well right now. And if we could, I'd like to call for a motion for a brief recess.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right. Let's re-adjourn in about, we'll call it 10:15. All right. I got 10:20. We're running a little late. We're gonna go ahead and get started again here. I believe the next item on the agenda is, it's gonna be, number four, Dee Cosby. Actually, it's gonna be Tony.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Tony Morgan, Recreation Department Assistant Director. What we want to talk to you about this morning is, what we've been talking about for a couple of months now is the tennis courts in Mill Creek. You can go to the next slide. We have a tremendous amount of cracks and hazards on the tennis courts in Mill Creek Park. We had the cracks filled and the surface redone in May of 2024. And by March of '25, we had about 720 additional linear cracks, and it continues to grow today. Next slide, please. These are some of the pictures of our cracks. Whenever we resurfaced last time, we used fiberglass overlay on some of the cracks to help slow down the cracking. Actually went in the opposite direction for us. And we have order coming up through, delaminated this fiberglass system and started causing trip hazards. The bottom right-hand picture- The bottom right-hand picture shows that where that fiberglass is rolling up. And we had to shut down four of our ten courts in January. Next slide, please. So a little history of the tennis courts here at Mill Creek. They were constructed and opened in 2011. In 2011, we also went into an intergovernmental agreement with Bullock County Board of Education. The tennis courts, also the home tennis courts for Statesboro High School. They're, they use these courts to host the high school regionals, middle school regionals. We're also a neutral site for Georgia High School Association for competitions. We also have some homeschool curriculum PE as a homeschool PE location. This is where we house just about all of our tennis programs. We host tennis group lessons, and we are also USTA, which is the United States Tennis Association Certified Courts. It allows us to host USTA tournaments. We had eight on schedule for '25, and we had to cancel all eight of them due to the court conditions. Next slide, please. Little timeline of where we are this year. So in December, we started seeing a lot of cracks and water coming up through the cracks. By January 6th of '25, we had to shut down seven through 10, four of our courts due to tripping hazards. From January to April, I met with a lot of specialists. I met with four tennis court construction contractors, the county engineer, an outside engineering firm, public works director and assistant director, a pavement preservation and maintenance company, which is Craft Co., one sports surfacing professional, a local contractor, and two reps from NRCS, which is the Natural Resource Conservation Services. They all had the same thought that our issues were coming from hydrostatic pressure, which is causing all of our problems, which is the groundwater coming up. So we contacted WSP to install some test wells around tennis center. If you go to the next slide. They installed five test wells around the tennis center. They come back, whenever a report come back that it was not our groundwater issue. All the red dots on the map indicate where the test wells were. Test number five, which is the top left-hand corner, coming at 4.25 feet is where the groundwater was below the surface. That's not anywhere where we're having the issues. That court is actually where we have the least amount of issues. Where we have the most issues are at the bottom right two. And those come in at 6.6 feet and eight point one feet below the ground. So that last reading was taken on May 15th. Right before that, we had a rain event that dropped five inches of rain. And we still were not having any issue. The rainwater did not cause, or the groundwater was not causing any issue. At that point, I didn't know what else to do. I called Ron Nelson, county engineer. We reached out to WSP to see if they would take on this project and help us guide through to see what we need to do. They got a lot on the books, so they referenced us to Pape Dawson. So we met with Pape Dawson and WSP on the courts in July. Go up to the next slide, please. So we had WSP after that meeting come in and do some court coring on the two or the four courts that we have shut down to see what we had going on under the courts. We took cores where there were cracks, and we took cores where there were no cracks. And where the cracks were, the ground was fully saturated. Where we had no cracks, we had normal moisture levels. Their report indicates that the water is coming in through the cracks and saturating. It's causing the saturation, and the water comes back up. Next slide, please. So moving forward, we've been talking with Pape Dawson, and they provided a proposal. It's what we're here for today. Their proposal covers a topographic survey. They will do the utility locates, all the construction documents from demo, storm grade, storm drainage plans, grading, construction phasing. Next slide, please. They would do all the permitting approvals, the project management, construction phase from the earthwork, asphalt. They'll have somebody on site reading asphalt temperatures, making sure everything is correct. And they would schedule to work. Their proposal is $58,670. Our goal is to get started on this October 1st, if possible. We're trying to get a completion date of March 1st, if weather permits. Like I say, the high school uses this. That's whenever their program starts up in the spring as well. So we're trying to get this thing turned around. Is there any questions? This will be paid through SLOST dollars. I know that would come up. There is an opportunity through USTA, the United States Tennis Association, for some funding. Dee and I have reached out to them, and we're starting conversations with that today. I don't know what that dollar figure will look like, or if it would even be part of it, but we're trying to go that route as well.
Do we know roughly what the total construction cost is gonna be? Has anybody thrown out numbers yet? I know this is just engineering.
This is just engineering, and they will give us a cost estimate before we start that route, so we'll know where to go.
Any other questions or comments? If not, am I asked for a motion on this item? Do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Atkins. You're our next contestant.
Okay. Well, this is on the FLOST agreement, as you alluded to earlier, Mr. Chairman. The presented resolution will approve an intergovernmental agreement between Bullock County and the municipalities of Statesboro, Brooklyn Portal and Register, calling for a referendum on imposing a 1% floating local option sales and use tax, or FLOST is commonly called, on November 4th, 2025. Subject to referendum approval, the intergovernmental agreements provides that the rate of the tax is 1%, and that it will be imposed for five years. In accordance with the FLOST statutes, this 1% sales and use tax must be used exclusively for ad valorem property tax relief. You had touched on that earlier as well. Assuming the referendum passes, the collection of the 1% FLOST will begin on January 1st, 2026. And I understand that Brooklyn Portal and Register all approved this last week, and Statesboro has it on their agenda to approve tonight. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, here are no questions or discussion. Can I get a motion on this item? All right. Got a motion and a second? Yeah, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis did the motion. Mr. Connor did the second. All in favor? Y'all better raise them hands high. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, county engineer, Mr. Ron Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Nelson, Engineering Office. Next on the agenda here, we've got a request to approve a contract with Kimley Horn and Associates on the amount of $726,500. And this will move us into our stage two of our final design associated with our batch one roadway design project we started earlier this year. Originally, we had stage one, which covered our preliminary engineering design and permitting. We have, to this point, completed in that first stage, task one, project meetings and coordination. Task two, database preparation, which is associated with our survey. Task three, concept plans have been completed. And task four, our preliminary plans have been completed. So we are asking to advance into our stage two in order to complete this project, and this project covers the following roads. Floyd Clark Road, Deer Run Road, Deer Run Court, Deer Run Lane, Grimshaw Road, Grimshaw Lane, and Prather Road. This will be covered by T-SLOST. Any questions?
When are they expecting to have these, I guess, ready to bid for construction?
Grimshaw Road and Grimshaw Lane will be our priority. Those will be in the late winter of '26, so probably in the February, March timeframe. And then we're looking towards the remaining roads will be associated with work in FY '27, so probably next July. But we will have all this ready ahead of time. It'll be us waiting on the final funding. That's correct.
Ready to get, some of these will be already ready to go.
Absolutely. They'll be ready. We'll be, finally, all of them will be done next May, but the first two will be Grimshaw Road and Grimshaw Lane in March '26.
Any other questions? Mr. Davis?
May I speak?
Absolutely.
Jeff Atkins, I own property on Prather Road. Is that a conflict of interest in voting for this?
Well, it could be, I guess. If you wanna, if you don't feel comfortable voting on it, you feel like it would. The appearance of impropriety, I guess.
Motion to approve.
Going out of air. Are you gonna? Oh, you're in? Okay. All right. Need a motion. Oh, there's approved. There's a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Number seven.
Number seven, approve a contract with Parker Engineering the amount of $18,000 for providing design and engineering services for permanent repairs to a bridge culvert wing wall on Pleasant Hill Road to be funded by T-SLOST. So this will be associated with our FEMA engagements. We'll be looking for FEMA reimbursement. This will be an in-kind replacement. These services will be for the engineering portion only, and they'll be provided by Parker Engineering. Any questions?
I know we've lately been using Kimley Horn for the FEMA replacements and all that. Parker, we swapping over to them on these since they're a smaller project?
Well, just by chance, a similar project of this nature showed up on, in conversations, actually. So in trying to advance this forward and meeting the deadlines that FEMA has provided to us. With that being the case, we did come across a very good example where Wesley Parker's group put together a project where there was a broken wing wall in Evans County. The scope was primarily exactly the same. So when looking at that and having conversations with Wesley Parker, it just developed into a good opportunity for us to advance, maintain schedule, keep our friends at FEMA happy, and here we are asking for this.
So they've done the FEMA requirements and all that stuff, so they know exactly what we need to do.
Absolutely. They know how to converse with FEMA very well. They know exactly what they're looking for. He has almost like a specialty engineering house that's been doing nothing but FEMA work in Evans County, Jenkins County, and Scraven County recently as part of Tropical Storm Debbie.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a motion on this item. Got them both? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Nelson?
Number eight, approve a contract with Parker Engineering in the amount of $33,000 for providing design and engineering services for permanent repairs to a reinforced concrete pipe drainage crossing on Metz Road, which will be funded by T-SLOST. Similar situation, comparison in projects. While we were engaging with Parker Engineering on our Pleasant Hill, we also had a conversation about this particular project in order to maintain schedule and meet the requirements that FEMA has. Felt like it'd be a great idea to try to move through with this with Parker Engineering, so we're asking for this approval today.
Questions or comments? Do I have a second? All in favor? Carries unanimously.
Item number nine, approved task order, FY '26 right-of-way. It's EO 3A. That's just our internal project identification in the amount of $16,350 to perform right-of-way acquisition services along JA Hart Road within the proposal, within the proposed cul-de-sac location. This work will be funded by T-SLOST. So this is a project that's been around since about February of 2023. Local engineer, EMC Engineering, provided all the services here, and we are trying to get this one completed as far as getting right-of-way acquisition handled. And the right-of-way acquisition on this one right here will have required right-of-way in the proposed cul-de-sac location. So we're asking for approval to move into right-of-way acquisition with a task order for JMT.
Is this just for the services, or does that include the lane purchases?
Does not include the purchases. It'll just be for services only. So there are administrative fees.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Can I get a motion on this item? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I believe this brings us to number 10.
Number 10. Similarly with number nine, so a request and approval to go into acquisition services with JMT. Same project. It'll just be 3B, and this will be associated with the actual roadway portion of JA Hart. Same engineer, EMC Engineering provided the engineering services. This will be for $36,500. And primarily, this will be associated with driveway easements, easements for construction of slopes along JA Hart. And just for, just so we can kind of know too, the reasoning behind having two on the same roadway. There were two plats created, one for the right-of-way acquisition in the cul-de-sac area, and then the remainder of the road had a separate plat just for easements that are needed to complete the design.
Questions, comments? Can I get a motion on this item? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
To our consent agenda, item number five, approve the purchase of two ambulances from 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment for a total of $634,910.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. In late July, we put out an RFP for two ambulances that will be purchased this year in for SLOST. We only received two responses, and that was from Custom Truck and Body Works, and 10-8 Fire Equipment was the second bid. We have trucks from both vendors. We have a longstanding history with Custom Truck. 10-8 Fire is newer to our, our newer ambulances or 10-8 Fire ambulances. So the total bid, and I think the problem might have been I only included the low bid in my agenda packet. But the low bid was $634,910. And that was, that was 10-8. Custom Truck and Body Works bid was $688,034. So $53,000 difference, and we were budgeted $700,000. So request approval for the two trucks.
I singled this out because I only saw one bid. I talked to Mr. Brian. I apologized. I should have called him for clarification. I talked to him before the meeting. Before he came up, he gave me a perfect explanation. I apologize. I appreciate, I appreciate your attitude. Thank you.
In my haste to get it on the agenda, I probably should have included both the bids, but I did not. So my apologies.
Ryan, can we also quickly, very quickly, talk about the delivery time difference?
Yeah, so like I said, Custom Truck and Body Works, we have a specific truck that we like to lay out of our ambulances, and we like for all the ambulances to be laid out the same. That way, if a firefighter from Brooklyn comes to a call, you know, in Statesboro, he knows exactly where everything is on the same truck. Custom Truck and Body Works is exactly that. They can, they can build us a custom truck exactly like we want on 10-8. Fire is more of a assembly line truck. So. So we lose a bit of, a bit of the custom aspect of it. However, they, 10-8 can provide us everything we need. And one of the biggest aspects is 10-8 can get us these trucks in about seven months versus 18 months for custom truck. So Custom Truck and Body Works unfortunately is still backed up from the, from the COVID days and from the chip delays and, you know, that they were having. So, and they can only kick out about 12 to 14 trucks a month. So when you have 120 trucks on the, on the log book, you know, you're looking at long lead times. So seven months is a lot better than 18, and we get it for a cheaper price, so.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a motion. I hear a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. All right, now moving to number, this is number seven on the consent agenda, approve the purchase of two roll-offs via Sourcewell Contract from Sanson Equipment Company in the total of, let me get these glasses on to quit fighting this, $438,824 to be paid with SLOST funds.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Staff recommends and requests consideration of motion to award the purchase of Sanson Equipment Company for the purchase of two '26 new Freightliner 114 SD chassis with Pac-Max 60K roll-off horse units in the amount of $219 and four, 200? 60K roll-off horse units in the amount of $219,412, excuse me, each. Sourcewell quote numbers attached for contract pricing. Total cost requested $438,824, and these items will be purchased from funds from Sploost.
I guess whenever I saw this, and then we had the presentation with All Greens too, I guess I had a concern of if we did end up privatizing something with All Greens in the next few months, or what the timeline of that is, why, you know, it'd feel like we throw away $450,000, because obviously we wouldn't need these after that. Could you kind of give me a head, or I guess a timeline, if we could even get the privatization started with All Greens?
As I mentioned, yeah, as I mentioned earlier, the discussion needs to come together with the city on service delivery agreements and being able to negotiate some of those aspects of that service delivery agreement to even be able to consider anything permanent with All Greens or any kind of privatization. So I would suspect, and this is just my opinion, the process to take probably a couple of years for us to get out of this, to get the service delivery agreement worked out, and for also to nail down any financials that might come along with this privatization, and to give All Greens the timeframe to ramp up and be ready to take that responsibility on. So with all of those things considered, I would suspect that we're probably two years out at least from privatization, and I don't think that our current truck force would last that long with. So I think that we're better off to go ahead and be able, and then we can either work out some agreements with All Green for the equipment or, you know, containers, equipment, trucks, you know, whatever in that time, you know, at that time, if we proceed that way.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a motion. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that completes our new business for the day. Moving into staff comments, Mr. Ron Nelson, I believe you're gonna give us some good news today.
I hope so. I hope so. So real quick, some updates on our Cypress Lake Road closing, the bridge.
Before you get started with that, will you just give us the good news that went out yesterday?
Oh, you want the best news. I was gonna say the best for last. We'll go best first. All right, yes, sir. So best news will be Neville's Denmark Road was opened yesterday at about 5:10 PM. So it is open to the public. Got everything finished up yesterday. Safety inspection was completed, and it was actually closed just for numbers. It was 377 days. So turned it around from August 7, 2024 until, what, August 18 of 2025. So I think a shout out to our partners at Kimley Horn on their design and permitting, and then also Reeves Construction. They advanced everything through, had a great subcontractor who produced a very good triple box culvert that they beat the schedule, so it was great. Great to see that happen. Good deal. So also, on our Cypress Lake Road closing with that bridge, so received an update from our engineer, Heathon Lineback. We are still tracking along on schedule. Next deliverables will be our 30% plans. We should receive those mid-September. That's on schedule, and then looking forward to the geotechnical studies to begin next month as well in September. Tracking along for our final plans, first of 26, and then the construction schedule is still showing we can begin procurement for a contractor in April of 26. We'll be able to award hopefully and give notice to proceed May of 2026. Construction schedule's still holding at about 15 months, so we're looking towards opening the traffic in August of 2027. So that's what we're holding on right now with our schedule for delivery on Cypress Lake Road. Want to make an announcement that Georgia DOT has put a project out. It's, it has actually been awarded, and they've had a pre-construction conference. McLendon Enterprises will be the contractor. It'll involve work along Lakeview Road from the city limits, about 354 feet north of Landfill Road to Old River Road for approximately 7.56 miles of two-foot paved shoulders on both sides of the road. It'll also include thermoplastic striping for the entire distance, new signs and signposts, RPMs, and then they'll restore the grassing that they disturb as well. So that is anticipated to begin next Monday, August 25. So looking forward to that project with DOT. Also, real quick, Country Club Road is next on our agenda for moving forward. That project is with FEMA. FEMA is still yet to approve the H&amp;H finally. We do have a final amount that Corey Kemp has signed off on. 891,000 has been approved for that particular project. Design is still advancing with Kimley Horn, no holdup there. Schedule for final plans in February of 2026. Will begin procurement for a contractor in March of 2026. Anticipate opening Country Club Road back up September of 2026. GW Oliver, road still closed. It is moving through with Kimley Horn, designer of record. The H&amp;H report is in review with FEMA. It was submitted originally on July the 25th. It was resubmitted on August the 14th. We have an opinion of probable construction cost in that particular project, $2.3 million for a 150-foot-long, 33-foot-wide, multi-span bridge. The design and permitting is heading towards April of 2026, having that completed. Then we can obviously begin procuring a contractor, anticipate award with the contractor May of 2026. Also anticipate a 15-month construction period, which will give us an opportunity to open GW Oliver back to traffic in August of 2027. That brings us up to date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nelson, Mr. Nelson, with all those expenditures, I thought you might bring a check.
Oh, yes, sir. I agree. That's right. Thank you, sir.
Have any other staff comments? All right, moving into the Commissioner comments. Go ahead, Mr. Newkirk.
Mr. Pope, do you mind calling you up for a second? I know we exchanged some emails this week, but I know we've had three new Commissioners come up, and the possibility of maybe redoing some of this growth map 2045. What would be the next stages if we chose to do that as a group? What would be, I guess, the next steps that we would have to do?
Make sure I can talk here. So I looked into a little bit after you and I exchanged some emails about the updating the map. DCA, Department of Community Affairs, has two, I guess what they call an amendment and an update for a comprehensive plan, and depending on the amount of changes that the board might would want to do, if it stayed as just an amendment to the plan, and again, I'd have to make sure with DCA on process, but if it was just an amendment to the map, I think it would just be a matter of running it like a zoning case, which would be a public hearing and submittal to basically just notifying Department of Community Affairs that we've made an amendment to the plan. But I think it would run typically like a zoning case, the same timeline and so forth. But depending on what DCA comes back and says after I kind of, you know, run it past them, if they said it, that would basically trigger an update, then you're looking at probably, you know, probably a five-month process by getting a committee together, comprehensive plan committee, and revisiting that map and come back with suggestions, and then coming back with a, like a zoning case timeline. So depending on what DCA comes back and says, if it triggers an amendment then, or an update, it could be longer. But I was, and I thought about this, we do have an RFP out currently to find a consultant to draft our methodology report for impact fees, and if, and assuming the board wanted to move forward with impact fees, once that report was produced, that consultant would then be in charge of updating the comprehensive plan, which would be an update because you're adding a whole section to the comp plan. That methodology report will consider future growth maps and future population growth, and so all that mixes together. Of course, it's up to the board and however you want to do it, and either way, I can facilitate that. But it may, may want to look at how it fits into the impact fee methodology report and do it all at one time, if that's something that the board wanted to do.
Appreciate it.
Does that help?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
I also wanted to say, I know we got a tax hearing Thursday night. I'm unfortunately not going to be here. I just want to make sure everybody knows I'm not skipping out because it was, it's a tax hearing. I got a, I got an event that I have to go to in Brooklyn that I could not get out of, so I just want to let the public know of that.
Any other Commissioner comments?
I got one, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't gonna bring this up, but I might as well bring it to light. The young lady talked, she was a little jittery up here talking to us this morning about the taxes, but we ain't gonna bite you, and we normal folk, just like everybody else is, so I'm gonna tell you how normal I am. Yesterday afternoon, yesterday about lunchtime, I'm coming down Arcola Road, the dirt part of Arcola Road. Lo and behold, there's one of our big, pretty fire trucks parked in the dirt road doing a lift and assist, a lift assist or whatever they were doing, and they didn't get off to the edge of the road because it's been raining, it was wet. Well, my genius self decides to take a high boy and decide to go around the county's fire truck.
How'd that work?
I've stayed there and watched the fire truck drive off. You know, I just figured everybody'd get a kick out of that, you know. Because I certainly didn't want to bother them and what they was doing, way more important than what I was doing, but, you know, sometimes I was, as I was sitting there, I was thinking, you know, I said, you know, I should have just been patient. You know, I think we need to, we need to do that in everything, what we deal with this county and things we deal with, how we do, it's never right then when you want it. It's stuff we have to be patient for. Or we cannot be patient and be stuck over there in the ditch the whole time. So like I said, you know, not being patient and not doing the right thing, it come back and bit me, and I think, you know, a lot of things we heard today are, follow the same lines, same lessons.
Mr. Chairman, I want to personally think that thinking this apartment, they always do a fantastic job, but they were actually pretty much at work last week on Bass Creek Church Road, and lo and behold, it couldn't have been done at a better time because fire truck had come and they had us later to the neighborhood, and I was just thinking, if they hadn't been completed at work, it would have been a problem. So I just said, I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you. Nobody had any idea that we're having, that more senior citizen had fallen, and like I said, I went to try to assist, but like I said, I wasn't equipped to help, and just a big thank you to you and your team for all you did.
Some people do like you, Dick.
Okay, I got a couple of things I want to talk about, and Mr. Rushing mentioned this in his prayer, and I just want to remind everybody that, you know, we're at the beginning of the school year. Buses are still trying to work out bus routes. It's early in the morning. That's also the time that you got a lot of farmers are out moving equipment around the Well, I know I was in a hurry to get here this morning. I got caught in traffic. I know that there are several of the staff members mentioned the same thing, they got caught in traffic. Please be careful, y'all. We're getting to that time of year where there's a lot of fog in the morning times. Also, the days are starting to get shorter, so you're gonna see that it's, until we do the time change, it's gonna get, if we get later in the morning, it'll be dark till almost 8 o'clock some of these days. So it's gonna be harder to see kids and pedestrians, other slow-moving vehicles on the road, and please just be patient and cautious as you're out there traveling around the county. We are quickly moving into peak storm season. I just want to remind everybody that just like the county right now is trying to be proactive in making some arrangements so that we can respond when there is a storm, not if, when there is. I would encourage you all to start working on your individual plans now. You know, if things get bad and you can't stay here, where are you gonna go? Is that gonna be with friends and neighbors? If you have special medical needs and you need electricity or things like that, you need to make sure that not only do you have some type of redundant service there at the house, whether it's a generator or a Generac, or a neighbor that you can stay with, or somebody that you can go stay with out of town, make those plans now. And don't forget your pets. A lot of storm shelters will not allow you to take pets in with them. Please do not leave your pets at home to fend for themselves while you go off to safety. Okay? And then the last thing that I want to just do is remind everybody that, you know, we're very fortunate in this county that we have a correctional institute that provides an immense amount of inmate labor that comes at a cost savings that I don't think we do a good job of capturing what that does for our county. Now, our county manager has told me, the first time that I went out and toured the Correctional Institute, he said, you know, the state puts two kinds of people in prison. People we're scared of and people we're mad at. And it was very profound to me, because the people that we house at the Bullet Correctional Institute for the state, these are not people that we're scared of, these are people that we're mad at. They've done something wrong, and they're gonna pay back what they've done by paying it to this community. So if you're in the Correctional Institute, and I don't know if everybody knows this, we've got 100 and, 160 today, 160 inmates. Every one of them has a job. And if they don't have a high school education, they're gonna leave there with at least a GED. So, you know, that's profound, and you talk about taking people that have made a mistake or a bad choice in their life, and instead of sticking them into the state prison system where they're learning how to be a better criminal, they're coming here, they're busy every day. I'm a firm believer that an idle mind is a devil's workshop, and they keep them busy. They're well taken care of, and if you ever get a chance to talk with them, you'll see that every one of them is very happy to be here, because they know that the alternative is much worse. So I just want to thank Warden Tool and his staff for all the work they do to help us have that labor and that resource in the county. With that being said, we're about to move into executive session, and I'm gonna need a motion after I read this. There will be no further action taken after this executive session this afternoon. I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-3B2 and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney Jeff Akins for the purpose of discussing personnel and real estate matters. Can I get a motion?
Give it.
Second.
Sure.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.